Skipping down to the city managers. Oh, let's hold that. Council, Marcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we get into city manager's portion of the agenda, would it be possible to suspend the rules and take something out of order? Because there are a few people here that would like to speak and, you know, we don't want to torture them too much by keeping them here all evening. So if I could, and that would be the motion 27 and 28, we could take them both together.
Okay, motion by Council Mercier to suspend the rules to take items number 27 and 28 out of order. Seconded by Councilor Belanger. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. We'll go to item number 27. Motion by Council Mercier requests city council go on record in support of returning the city manager to be placed at JFK Plaza next Christmas season. Seconded by Councilor Rourke. Council Mercier?
I think it's-
Do you want to just read the second one of the same, the second motion?
Yes, thank you.
Item number 28, Council Mercier requests city manager find ways and means to establish a fund for residents to donate to the restoration of the mangers statutes. By Council Mercier. Seconded by Council Samaras. All those, on the motion, on both motions, Council-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's only right that those that registered to speak could come before I speak. Thank you.
Judge Kumazalis?
Good evening. My name is George Kumazalis. I live at 241 Remington Street. And I am here at the request of Councilor Mercier. I express my personal sentiments about this moving of the manger to her yesterday. And she asked me if I would speak before the council expressing my concerns. I fully support 100% Councilor Mercier's motions, number 27 and 28, to have the manger moved back to City Hall or JFK Plaza. And I will explain why. I also fully support Councilor Mercier's motion to have a fund created, and I personally would donate to that fund. I remember as a child, my grandmother used to walk us from Dummer Street, past Cardinal O'Connell Parkway, here to City Hall. And we were going to go see Panahia and Theoulii and the Maii, which in Greek is translated into the Holy Mother and Jesus, and the magicians, the wise men, the three wise men. And as little children, my sister and I would look forward to this. It was a beautiful experience. It was an educational experience. It wasn't a religious experience, although it has religious overtones, of course. But it was an experience that reflected our common culture as Lowellians, the tradition. That manger has been there for decades, for generations of people have enjoyed going and seeing that manger. So, on that reason, I would contribute to this fund because it hits me personally at home. And I'll try to make this short because I know that George can be long-winded. But I strongly believe that whoever made this phone call to the city, to Mr. Marshand or to the city manager, or whoever wrote a letter and complained, I think they're standing on shaky ground. I really feel that, as I explained to Rita, this is beyond a religious separation of church and state issue. I really feel that we have a precedent set here of a work of art. There was a poem was written by Paul Marian, our poet laureate, if we have one. A painting was made by Mr. Jarvis, my own personal friend, Vassilius Jarvis, of that poem and of the manger. It was written about in the Lowell Sun a week or two ago. There was a big article. This is a precedent that the people of this community, whether they be Christian or atheist or whatever, have put this relic there, this work of art, which has set a historical precedent, a cultural precedent, a civic precedent of a tradition of every Christmas seizing, season, having this manger there where people can go and enjoy it for what it is, irregardless of its religious overtones. And now, some people here might not like what I'm about to say. They may be surprised and shocked at what I'm about to say. But I'm saying this for the benefit of the Law Department because we all know that law hinges upon the splitting of the hairs of a ganache of a technicality. And in this instance, I believe that this technicality may work in the city of Lowell's favor, which is this. Everyone thinks of that manger as a Christian diorama, as a Christian creche, as a Christian manger. And I am here to tell you that technically speaking, legally speaking, I personally do not believe it is even a Christian manger. We live in a city of ethnic diversity. And we proud ourselves on a city of multicultural and multi-religious and multiracial diversity. We are a microcosm of the United States. We are a microcosm of the world. People from all over the world come to the United States. They come to Lowell. And Lowell prides itself on being this welcoming to immigrants on open arms. Everyone comes here, and we're all Americans, and we all share in this great experience. That manger is actually pre-Christian. And I say this because if you look at the manger for what it is, what do you see? You see a barn out in the woods with animals. Pagans and naturalists can relate to that. A barn in the woods with animals. The Israelites were commanded by God to worship for 40 years out in nature, carrying the Ark of the Covenant and the Ten Commandments and the Tent of the Tabernacles in nature. God wanted them to be one with nature. He did not want them to be like the other nations. He did not want them to have a king. He did not want them to have a temple. But God relinquished, because God's kind of a soft-hearted liberal. And over time, he let King Saul become the king, and he let Solomon build the temple. But it wasn't supposed to be that way in the beginning. And I'm sure your pastor will confirm this. So, this natural tradition goes back to the Native Americans who believed in the one true God. They called him the Creator and the Great Spirit, before most of our ancestors were even baptized as Christians. So they worshipped nature. Now we move on to the Mother Mary and Joseph and Jesus. Were they Christians? No, they weren't Christians. They were Hebrews, Israelites. They weren't even Jews. Mother Mary and Elizabeth, who was the father of John the Baptist, who baptized Jesus, were Israelites. Joseph was not even Jesus's father. He was his paternal guardian. If you're a Christian and you believe our faith, and I was raised in the Christian religion, Jesus's father is God. Mary was immaculately conceived to be a clear vessel. And Jesus was miraculously born. His father was God, the way Anakin Skywalker's father was the Medichlorians, Darth Vader's father. It's Parthenogenesis, they call it, a virgin birth. Not only that, but in the Christian church, you have to get married before you can have children. It is anathema. It is taboo to have children out of wedlock. You can go downstairs and get a marriage license and get married, and that's fine legally. But not in the eyes of God. You have to get married and have a priest bless you and raise your children in the body of Christ. Were Mary and Joseph married when Jesus was born? No, they were betrothed. They were engaged. They were not married. They didn't go to the second ritual. Mary and Joseph were just engaged. What does that make Jesus Christ? This is why a lot of Jewish people do not accept Jesus as legitimate, because Jesus Christ was an illegitimate child. I won't use the word. It gets even more interesting. To be Jewish, your mother has to be Jewish, right? In Jesus's bloodline, he had Ruth. He was his Ruth was, Jesus's great-grandmother. She was the grandmother of Mary. Was Ruth Jewish? Was Ruth an Israelite? Was Ruth a Hebrew? No. If you read the Book of Ruth in the Bible, Ruth was a Moabite. Ruth was an Arab. That made him illegitimate. That's not Christian. And now we move on to the three wise men. Were they Jews or Hebrews or Israelites? No, they weren't. They weren't Christians. They were magicians. They were sorcerers. They were magi. They came from Babylon and Persia. They did not practice Christianity. They did not practice Israelite monotheism or Judaism. They practiced magic. They did astrology. If you're a Baptist minister, you're not supposed to have anything to do with astrology. It's un-Christian. So what I'm trying to say here to the Law Department is, this person who complained, because they were offended by this Christian manger, in reality, it's not even Christian. It's far more beautiful than that. It's multiracial. It's multicultural. It's multi-ethnic. The Christians can relate to it. The Muslims can relate to it because they're people of the book. The Jewish people can relate to it. The pagans, the New Age, all of them can relate to it. And this person who was offended by that and complained to City Hall, I'm offended by them. I'm offended by them because they're trying to compare apple to apple. And we all together are like a giant pumpkin, and they're like a little grape. They don't have an established tradition like a Christian science or an Immaculate or Holy Trinity. They're just a lone wolf individual complaining about this tradition that offends them. And that bothers me. I think this is a golden opportunity for the city of Lowell. Instead of putting away the manger and hiding it in embarrassment in the issue of political correctness, we should embrace the manger the way we should embrace Jewish people to put a menorah there, or Muslims to put a Koran, or Hindus to put a Krishna, or the Buddhists, the Cambodians, to put a Buddha, and allow our multiculturalism to shine and be what we are. As Abraham Lincoln said, "The better angels of our nature." Instead of excluding, we should include. And I really feel strongly about this, that the manger should be moved back. And I agree with Councilor Mercier that that is where it belongs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kumazalis.
Pastor Nazia?
If I could just remind our speakers, we have a five-minute rule. And we're flexible with it.
I'll just do two minutes because he said all. He said things I never heard. So thank you very much. Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. As I started the evening listening to the prayer, the opening prayer, I was so touched by the opening prayer that said, "May we stay faithful to the tradition of the Fathers." I have been a pastor in the city of Lowell for 30 years. My church is made out of 25 different nationalities. We beseech you tonight to seriously consider the request of our faithful public servant for 19 years. We need not to function out of fear, but have faith that God, who created us and who has kept this city to be so wonderful and beautiful, in Him we trust, in Him we live and move and have our being, He will protect us to keep the tradition of the Fathers that made this wonderful nation to be what it is, to be a nation desired by somebody like me 36 years ago, to leave Beirut, Lebanon, and come running for safety and for tradition and for beauty. Today, as I travel the world, I see the manger everywhere being respected by all religion. Even from the Middle East, where I come from, even Muslims honor and respect the manger. We need to trust God that He will continue to bless our city. As we honor His Son, please consider prayerfully and faithfully to bring it back. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend.
Kristina Cavalo?
Hello, my name is Christina Cavalo. And I was so afraid that I was going to be the last one to speak. And now I am. Thankfully, the Lord's moved me and the Holy Spirit has moved me that, yes, everyone's talked about many of things, but I wrote something different. And I promise that I will only take two minutes of your time. I'm here to speak about the manger, of course, the removal. And I was saddened when I noticed it gone, but I didn't pay any attention to it, really, because I'm so busy moving around and doing this and thinking about this and that, that I didn't take a minute to think about it moved, until I saw it when I went to Enterprise Bank and I passed by the church and I saw the manger there. And I said, hm, that's funny that nobody said anything in the Lowell Sun about the manger being moved. So I said, I'm going to have to ask about that. But I didn't. And it was after Christmas. I forgot about it until I saw what the Lowell Sun had written. Rita Mercier was saddened by it. And that's when I took the time to think about it. And I was saddened by it, too. But that's how we work in this country and in this world. We're getting so busy and so fast that Jesus is getting moved away and pushed aside, you know? And we're not noticing it. And if we don't pay attention, he's going to be gone before we know it. This country, first of all, the United States was founded on Judea-Christian values. If Judge Washington was alive today, he'd be mortified of what has happened. Every battle, anything that was going on in those times was prayed to God first before they made any decisions. And that's why this country was so blessed, because we trust in Jesus. And He loves us and He blesses us because we love Him. The documents were written in truth, and these men were willing to die for their beliefs, as well as the freedom that came with it. If we don't pay attention, we're going to lose all our rights before you know it. You know, we don't want to lose our Christianity. And because of peer pressure, political peer pressure, you know, I'm not here to talk about politics, really, but I'm here to fight for my Lord and Savior. And I will work for Him. And I'm sure that I will be put down, laughed, and scrutinized. However, so is Jesus. And this is the only way I can prove to the Lord that I love Him. Please, let's keep our tradition. This is why Lowell is so unique. That's why we, we don't have any debt. We didn't, the taxes weren't raised or anything. It wasn't because of great men that went to school and had the education. It's because Jesus found favor upon us. And that's why we are so blessed in this city. So let's keep the blessing going. And I don't make a lot of money. I'm on a fixed income. But I would be more than glad to give my money to the Lord to fix that manger. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cavalo. Anything else, Mr. Clerk?
No more speakers registered.
Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion is being brought forward for many reasons. First, this motion, at the time that I would have brought it in, was the most appropriate time because it involved the present holiday that we were celebrating, that being Christmas. We were celebrating the birth of a great leader. Call him a prophet. Call him Jesus. Call him the Christ Child. Whatever you want to call him, the holiday was about the real meaning of Christmas. It was about putting Christ back in the holiday, putting Christ back in Christmas. I want to also thank St. Anne's Church for offering room at the inn for the manger, the stable, the creche, the nativity scene, whatever you wish to refer the shelter that housed the baby Jesus. Although I am grateful why it ended up there at St. Anne's is beyond me. Were we afraid of being sued? Because if we were, this is one lawsuit I would have no objection to fight all the way. Other communities around us have no problem putting their manger on town property, so why should we be afraid? There was a question of the day in the Sun newspaper which asked why this happened, where 66% of the people checked off political correctness run amok. And I totally agree. Enough with running amok. Enough of being afraid. Enough of being bullied. In my opinion, I believe that the majority rule. There is a true majority that believes that the manger is and still would be a part of our Lowellian tradition, just as it was when I was a child and when they were young. It's ironic how simple it is for people to trash God, and then we wonder why the world is going to hell with shootings, killings, violence, and drugs. It's strange how lewd, crude, vulgar, and obscene articles pass freely through cyberspace. But public discussion of God nativity scenes is suppressed in the schools, the workplace, and now government. It's bizarre to think that one simple letter can move a nativity scene and crush the tradition and beliefs of a majority of people, and we succumb to it. Not me. I don't worry about what other people think. I worry about who that figure laying in the manger represents. I fear what he thinks. I want to know who on this council is with me. And I will request a roll call vote, which brings me to the next motion. I want to start a campaign whereby residents can donate money to sponsor the campaign to restore the stable figures to the fine quality that they should be in, so that when the light is finally shone on them, they look magnificent. I don't care who does the work, but by next Christmas, which is this year, I want the manger back to its original place and in magnificent shape. This is our custom. This is our right. Oftentimes, we highlight the beliefs and customs of different cultures. This time of year, it is our custom. If anyone else would like to join us as well and be over there, the menorah, whoever, I don't object to that. But let our beliefs also be highlighted also. This motion is to have my colleagues go on record in support of returning the stable back to its original place, where it has been ever since I was a small child, to City Hall at the JFK Plaza, and in this case, this year. I want the figures repaired and a bright light as strong as the Nought Star that guided the three wise men and the shepherds to the manger to be shown on the manger, to remind the city what the real meaning of Christmas is all about. I know some time ago, Mr. Manager, you told me the manger would be put in a better place, a more central location. But I was unclear to what that, what was transpiring until one night, I was downtown looking for the manger, and I couldn't find it. When someone told me where it was, I went back and saw that it was in total darkness, and I was appalled. In my personal opinion, I believe that the stable is in total darkness so that we cannot see the derelict, dilapidated condition that the figures are in. Therefore, in an effort to restore the integrity of the nativity scene figures, I will donate $100 to match Joanne Bastine's $100 check that was at my door yesterday, that Paul Belay donated $100 and $50 from Christine Cavalo. That's $350 already to start the restoration process. It's not being paid for from city funds. It's being paid for by private donations. And probably, we can call. I'll call tomorrow, see if there's a Lowell bank that will allow us to set up a nativity restoration fund. That will be very helpful and let the tradition continue. Thank you.
Further discussion on item number 27? We'll take these separately, Council Mercier?
Yes.
She requested a roll call. Further discussion, Council Belanger?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. I wholeheartedly support the motion set forth by Council Mercier. And I do want to thank the speakers for coming out tonight. Excuse me, they enlightened us here tonight in a very spirited manner. So thank you for coming out. But, you know, we've all been in the city for a long, long time. And we've all seen this display out in front of City Hall for many, many years. And I, myself, always viewed it as a celebration of Christmas. And that's no disrespect to anybody's religion or faith. So I think it belongs there. I think it should be there, and I would like to see it for this coming holiday season. Let's not forget, we have thousands and thousands of people who gather in front of City Hall for the City of Lights Parade. That's where the parade ends, right there in sight. So that would be yet another attraction for the paradegoers and city tourists. I think it belongs there. But a concern I do have is that I know it was there for many, many years, but it did experience some theft and/or vandalism, as shameful it is to say. So I don't want to be rallying. I don't want these hard-working people to pay out of pocket for funds. I don't want the community to be rallying for funds and then have to go back to them and say, "It was vandalized. We need more money." So I support it. But if the manager could find a way to deter theft and vandalism by making this more secure and safe, that would be great. I support it either way, but I just don't want anything happen to this display if we, again, have all these hard-working folks come forth, pay out of pocket for this. I don't want to be going to them a second time asking for money. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Further discussion? Roll call?
Mayor?
Council Kennedy?
Can I just ask through you to the city manager? Mr. Manager, I think the manger was moved probably before I came back on the city council. Can you explain to me why the manger was moved?
Mr. Manager?
Actually, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor, it was actually moved this year for the first time. We did receive complaints last year and consulted with the case law. And there have been a number of cases where communities have been found to violate certain civil rights by having manger displays on city property. There are circumstances where it has been allowed when it's part of a much larger type of display. So we sort of took our chances last year and left it where it was. But this year, we made the decision that we were essentially playing a form of Russian roulette, just waiting for a lawsuit to be filed against the city. And that we felt that a more appropriate place that would still be within the downtown area that people could view the manger, those that wish to view it, because it does have certainly some tradition that goes with it, would be at St. Anne's. St. Anne's is a historic church here in the city. It really ties back to the formation of the city. The mill owners themselves created St. Anne's. And we felt that that was an appropriate place for it. It would make it more visible for people that were walking through the downtown area. Our own observation is it probably does need better lighting. We also recognize that it needs some additional work to restore it. And we're looking to, so a number of people have come forward in the past with promises of donations, but for one reason or another, that didn't come through. We've actually done some footwork on this and determined that, we've spoken to some people, and the estimated cost is about $50,000, I believe, to, no, I guess that's $50,000 to replace it. But they, there is a time span to make the necessary repairs. And we're trying to work with some people to coordinate that effort.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that this was the first year that it had been moved.
Yes.
Was there a communication to the city council that it was going to be moved? Or was there, I don't remember anything about this.
I can't recall whether there was a communication of that sort, but, you know, we moved it this year.
Okay. And so if you knew, and I think all of us know that there are communities that keep a manger on town property in other communities, why did we change? Where did that, where did the objections come from that made us make a decision, or the administration make a decision, to change the site of the manger rather than to just leave it where it was? And-
Sure. The difference was that in the locations where it has been upheld, that you could have it. It's part of a much more, as I said, it's a much more comprehensive display with snowmen, igloos, Santa Claus, reindeer, perhaps a menorah, something along those lines. It wasn't, this was really just a standalone structure in the downtown area, on City Hall Plaza, on city property. We did, last year, seek to put some other displays up, but we were not successful in that effort. And so this year, again, rather than take the chance on that, and at the same time, I think it's important to note that we did not simply say, "It can't go up." We said, "Where can it be put that it would have the same presence in the downtown area that people could go see it and simultaneously not be on public land?" So this was an attempt to satisfy all interests.
Okay, but was there a group that threatened to take us to court or something if the manger was put up there?
We received, I believe we received several letters from people that had indicated this.
Different groups or from just-
It wasn't groups, it was individuals.
Okay. And were those individuals all from the same group or were they from different groups?
Again, there was no indication that it was a group. It was just a, individuals.
I have to think that there are other communities where there is a manger in place where they don't have a grouping of other displays beyond the manger.
There may be.
And that they, you know, that it works out okay. On the other hand, there was an item on the news today where the Oklahoma State Capitol, which has a Statue of the Ten Commandments, somebody wants to put a Statue of the Devil there as well. So, you know, I can see, but I'm not sure that they'll be successful. And I think that, you know, I think, I think this is a good motion, and that we should kind of stay with it. And we have 10 months to work on this. So if the Law Department thinks that there is, that we need to be a little bit more careful or diligent about doing it, then we have plenty of time to do that, it seems to me.
Council Malanazo and Council Samaras?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support the motion, and I want to thank Council Mercier for bringing it forward. And what I'd like to say, too, is that if you recall back probably four years ago, when we opened the council sessions when we opened the council sessions with the Lord's Prayer, we were actually approached by probably almost every denomination in the community, in Lowell and the Greater Lowell Community, to come up with a prayer more representative of the various churches and synagogues and so forth in the city. And the fact that Reverend Najam is here tonight speaking, I would ask that, if, again, this motion gets approved, that between now and the holiday coming up in 11 months, that we get this working group together to be, to put in place a more representative display, if you will, in order to deal with the issue that I'm sure the solicitor and what Counselor Kennedy just talked about in Oklahoma City doesn't end up, you know, following us with this vote, if you will. So I would encourage Reverend Najam and other folks in the Lowell area to work on making the display more representative. I actually was surprised to see it in front of St. Anne's, but at the same time, I wasn't offended, because I really thought, from the standpoint of foot traffic, that more people are actually walking by the manger and enjoying the scene. But, again, I'll support the motion to bring it back, but with the caveat that we work with all of the groups in the community to make it more representative of the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Counselor Samaras, and then Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. I'm a traditionalist by nature, and I look at it actually from its historic point of view, where it has a historic value. And Lowell is a gateway city, and we have people from many lands with many beliefs. And perhaps maybe this is the time to amend the motion, it's a good motion, but to amend the motion to be more inclusive at this particular time, and ask the Law Department if they can come up with a way to ensure that every group can be represented in some way on City Hall lands or on our city lands. I think the time has come to look at it from a holistic point of view and to be able to ensure to everyone that we are a nation that celebrates everyone's beliefs, and we allow everyone to have their beliefs. So rather than a push-and-shove type of situation, I think we should, we are a nation that's very accepting, and I think we should show that, that we are a city that's very accepting, and allow the manger to be there, but allow, whether it's a menorah, kwanzaa, whatever celebrations that are important to different ethnic people, take place.
Okay, so you're making another form of amendment to that motion?
Yes, I'd like to do that.
Amendment? Could you just state the amendment?
Amendment to be more, to be inclusive of, as the city manager stated, a more comprehensive plan to allow other ethnic groups to be represented.
Okay, so motion will be to adopt this with the amendment that the manager work with the Law Department to come back with a report on ways and means to accommodate other groups. Makes sense?
Yes.
Secondly, Counselor Malonazo, Counselor Mercier?
I don't have any objection to that. I'm talking about tradition, and if the Jewish people think and know that a menorah is their tradition, I welcome to have a ceremony to support that or whatever they want to do, that's fine. We hear about separation of church and state according to the Constitution. That translates to mean, to mean that the state cannot establish a religion. We're not establishing a religion, we're celebrating a tradition. Just yesterday morning, we all stood in front of our desk and we raised our hand, and Judge Pearson says, "Do you swear to uphold the laws of which you are responsible? So help you God, so help me God?" That's what we said. Are we going to take that out of that now? Every time you turn around, they're taking, they want to take, "In God we trust," off the money, "I pledge of allegiance, one nation under God," we can't even do that. If you don't want to salute your flag and say that, then find a country where you want to go. But the fact that I'm bringing this forward is because I'm tired of people writing a letter, and we're going to hide in a corner and shake and shiver. I understand that we try to avoid lawsuits, but sometimes you got to stand up and say, "No, I'm not going to back away from you." And this is what the gist of this motion is, and if it includes other traditions from other religions, other groups, other diverse people in the community, yes, I welcome that as well. I have no problem with that at all. If you want to celebrate and bring forth your tradition, I would allow that, just let us allow our manger, our stable, to be put back where it belongs. It's ours, and that's my motion, and I still would like a roll call on it.
Okay, we still have a couple more. Counselor Leahy and then Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a good motion, I'm going to support it. Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, you had stated that an attempt was made for other groups of faith, for maybe to, you know, showcase during the holiday season. Did the city reach out to those groups?
It was more trying to do more of a secular display as opposed to religious. We looked at last, it was a year ago, we looked at perhaps using floats from the City of Lights Parade, staging those, and again, just sort of encasing the whole plaza, but that was unsuccessful. But we didn't actually reach out to any other religious groups, no.
You know, with regards to what other councils have said, you know, terrific points, it was a centralized place in the city, maybe it could be something where it could be set up for the holiday season where, you know, you could bring your family, your children to not just, you know, the Christian and Catholic faith, but for all faiths, or maybe something that could be looked into for the future, and maybe that also protects the city from any litigation. Thank you.
Solicitor, do you have something? Madam Solicitor, you want to add something?
Yes, thanks. The, a couple of things. First of all, it isn't necessarily a case of just trying to avoid a lawsuit, but rather to follow the law. And actually, the example that Counselor Mercier, you had raised just a moment ago of taking the oath, that is the oath that all of us take in our prospective positions, to follow the law. And that's really what this is all about. I think it's very clear that as we have the manger set up right now, it is a violation of the law, not at all unlike action that this council has taken to comply with the constitutionality with respect to the makeup on the vocational school. With respect to bringing other things aboard, whether it be other, you know, religious symbols or other secular symbols, the manager is right, there has been really a case that has gotten into that. It's not something that Massachusetts federal courts have really adopted, and I don't know that that's something that necessarily would legally fly. But what we do right now, I can tell you, is not constitutional. It is a violation of the law, and by moving it, you're keeping it, you're not removing it altogether, it's not disappearing, it's going to be in the downtown, and that was really the attempt. I would say every year, probably, historically, the city has gotten from time to time letters of residents who are upset by a religious monument, a religious display at City Hall and in close proximity. The other thing that Counselor Kennedy had alluded to, there have been communities that have put up permanent displays, such as the Ten Commandments, and the result there is, now you do have other groups of various religious beliefs. Satanist is one that he had mentioned, that now want to erect alongside the Ten Commandments a statue of Satan, under the premise of what we've been talking about right now, that once you open up government public space to various religions, it's opened up in its entirety. So, in short, there is a lot of time to take a look at the issue. I think that there are a lot of issues to be looked at and to be taken seriously, and I don't know that there is a, necessarily, an easy fix if we want to have it right back to City Hall again.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Malonazo?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Belanger?
Yes.